Is unwell today. Sophie works for Sustram's and Sustram's are working in partnership with Denbysia on an active travel project in Llan Gollan. So instead of Sophie, we have Gwen Thomas with us. Gwen is, I think, network development and relationships manager for Sustram's, if I think that's right. So Sustram's are supporting us in effect. They are our consultant as we move along with this active travel project. And if I may, I'm just going to run you guys through the project that we're undertaking, the consultation that we're going to undertake next week, and then obviously open the floor to any questions that you have. I'll be as brief as I can. So in 2021, we created an active travel master plan for Llan Gollan. It was one of the first of its type in the whole of Wales. I think it was considered to be quite innovative, quite groundbreaking really, and something that other county councils hadn't embraced at that time. And what in effect it is, is we have got Sustram's, our industry-leading experts in active travel, to assess all of the active travel routes in Llan Gollan, walking and cycling routes, to assess their condition, their functionality, and to create a glossy document which sort of recommends how we can enhance each of those routes, and in what priority we could potentially enhance them. So starting from the most pressing down to the least pressing, if that makes sense. It was undertaken in parallel with the Active Travel Act. So all of the routes have been assessed in accordance with the Active Travel Act design guidance. We prioritised the routes. So when we've come up with prioritisations, which we can talk about more, we've looked at things like usage levels, potential usage levels, trip generators, you know, are they to schools, places of employment, that kind of thing. Road safety was factored into that as well. And the master plan has produced an itinerary of routes, starting with the most pressing for Llan. And the top one in that list is a route that focuses on Brook Street, Church Street, and Bridge Street. And I think the reason that's come out at the top is because it's a really popular route with schoolchildren, to the Bryn Coflawn and Gwernant site, to Dinas Bran in the other direction, high footfall levels, et cetera. And what we are doing now, and the reason we're here to talk to you guys this evening, is that next week, we're going to be doing some public engagement on that route, on the Bryn Coflawn, Church Street, and Bridge Street route. The public engagement is going to have a number of different facets to it. We are going to be, next week, I mean tomorrow, sorry, I said next week, I meant tomorrow. Let's be clear on that. We're going to be going to Bryn Coflawn and Gwernant, Gwen and her team, and doing some school-based work with the children tomorrow, finding out what they think. We're going to be pitching up outside the school in a gazebo at the end of the day to talk to the parents and the pupils as they leave the school. And we are also going to be in the town hall tomorrow evening. We've booked a slot, and we are welcoming members of the public to come and talk to us about those routes. But we'll also talk about anything else that's active travel related in Llan as well, you know. We're hoping the focus will be on those routes, but we're open to talk about anything that's to do with walking and cycling, really. I'm just sort of going through my notes. We have delivered letters to properties on Brook Street to try and make sure we get as many people as possible to attend on the evening. We put posters up, we have issued a press release, we have sent home letters with the children so the parents are aware we're going to be there tomorrow. We're coming here this evening to talk to you guys, to make sure the town council are a key part of this public engagement process. And the way the engagement's going to look is we're not going to focus too much on the specific, we're not going to turn up with plans which are really detail orientated, where we say, these are our ideas. What we want to do is invite people to come and talk to us and tell us what they think the problems and the opportunities are on that route. We don't want to lead people in a certain direction. We want to have an open discussion with the residents, with the town council, et cetera. And we want them to tell us what they think the issues are, what they think the opportunities are, what their experiences are, when they use these routes on a daily basis. And then that will be used to influence how we design any potential resolutions. It's what we're sort of branding, a community-led design process, which is, again, something we've not piloted before in Denbysia. We're trying to do more engagement, we're trying to talk to more people, we're trying to bring the end users with us on the journey, so to speak. We're hoping it will engender more, sort of more involvement, more use of the routes when we've finished, a bigger buy-in from the public, if that makes sense. And I think the final thing I'll say is that following completion of the public engagement, and we're doing this in partnership with TFW and Welsh Government, so the grant funding comes from there that we're using, we've asked for more grant funding for the forthcoming financial year that we'll use to take our design forwards. So once we've finished this first phase of the engagement, and we incorporate the ideas that the public have given us into the design, we'll have more money from Welsh Government next year to take that forwards, to do a detailed design, to do cost estimates, to do more engagement, with the idea being eventually in 2024/25, I think, we will bid for money to build that route, to make all those improvements. And then we will move on to route number two on the list potentially, and work down that list that we've created sequentially, if that makes sense. So that's a lot of information, I grant you that. So please, if anyone has any questions, fire away, I'm happy to have a chat about it all.
Thank you very much. If we go to Gwen then next, we'll leave questions to the end, if that's okay with everybody?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I would say stepping in for Sophie relatively last minute, so I don't have anything particularly prepared. We can, as I say, or as Ben was saying, there'll be the school classroom sessions tomorrow at Scob Gwernant, and then at Bryn Coflawn on Thursday. I'll be arriving at Llan Gollan in time for the school gate sessions, starting at half past two, due to finish at four. And the town hall meeting will be starting at seven, and packing up at around about half past eight there. So hopefully that's a good time for people who wouldn't be able to make any daytime sessions, although I think it's valid to say that the at-school gate session is very much focused on obviously getting that, the parents and guardians who are picking up children, and who see what the sort of issues are for encouraging walking and cycling to the schools, you know, on a daily basis. And that's where I think it's really key to grab them whilst they're milling around. Hopefully the weather's not promising too bad, so that should help us there. But obviously, there's sort of an online engagement as well, so people can get involved if they can't get to the sessions tomorrow. Then the idea being, obviously, to get that first-hand knowledge from people who are there all the time, people who live in the street, understand how people are currently using the space and routes around for walking and cycling, or if they can't, or feel that they can't, or especially maybe if they feel that children unaccompanied, for example, wouldn't be able to, how do we make this area better for all, especially those who are going to be our active travellers in the future? You know, if they can walk and cycle to school, then the chances that they'll walk and cycle to work and college as they get older is far higher. And I think it's a really, you know, Llan Gollan's a fantastic place to do this master planning project, because it's quite a nice, small enough town. And obviously, you've got the bonus of having the secondary school there as well. So obviously, then people that we can get to walk and cycle to Gwernant and Bryn Coflawn, obviously, with it, those that live within the town, the chances of then getting them to carry on walking and cycling to get up to, no, not Calabran, Dinas Bran, sorry, obviously, real opportunity there. And when we've looked at the figures, it's quite difficult with Llan Gollan. Obviously, we have got some chap accounts that Denbysia organise. But when we look, trying to use things like census data, unfortunately, because the census data looked at Llan Gollan, and that's okay, not just the town, but the overall rural area as well. But from what we were trying to decipher, there's quite a lot of walking that happens within Llan Gollan already. So it feels like a really good place to, you know, have that extra push. Those people who are walking, how do we make sure that they feel safe? How do we make sure that they feel part of the community and welcome to the community in the way that they want to travel? And I think there's that opportunity again, because of the short distances, you know, that cycling is a real opportunity. So, yeah, and obviously, on top of that, there's also then making sure that routes are in line with the Active Travel Guidance, as accessible as possible for all users. So that's obviously people who are using wheelchairs, people who are pushing prams, double buggies, and all the rest as well. So that's sort of our, we're quite excited to be working in Llan Gollan. So yeah, if anyone is able to join tomorrow, whether that's at the school gates, or in the evening session, then it would be brilliant. Please make yourself known, because I can see people, but I can't see particularly well on this screen at the moment.
Yeah, we're tiny little dots on the screen there, aren't we? Thank you very much, those of you. Have we got any questions in the room?
What's the reason behind starting the project? Is there any actual background reason why this is being put forward, especially in Llan Gollan?
Yeah, I'll answer that. So it's something that we've been keen to do. So the Active Travel Act identifies designated urban settlements in each sort of local authority area. We've got 10 or 11 in Denbysia, with Llan Gollan being one. We were very interested in starting this master planning process for all of our communities, and one of them needed to be the pilot. We'd had recently undertaken the Llan Gollan 2020 scheme, which was a significant investment. And it just felt like a logical step would be to build on the sort of momentum that I'd created, and then start looking at the whole of Llan Gollan, really, and sort of cascade in that investment further out into the community.
And I think I'd like to add to that, really, that as part of the 2021 review of the Active Travel Network maps, which is the maps that every designated local settlement within any given local authority have to have by, through the Active Travel Act, through the law, there was quite a high response rate from Llan Gollan residents, or potentially some people would be people that were, you know, travelling in for work, for example. But I think that was really heartening to see, that there was an obvious appetite for improving things for walking and cycling. I think that's always a really good place to start on these sorts of projects, because you're saying, the people who want, we want, who want to do this, who want to enable good walking, cycling, wheeling routes, let's work with the willing to start at least, isn't it? Yeah.
Thank you. Answer.
Where's all the, just, is there any background dictation that's been arisen from this? Or is there any names that need to be put forward? Or is it just a general consensus that Llan Gollan is the pilot, and then we've just kind of got to accept this?
It's a decision made at officer level by the county council. It wasn't that we compared data for different communities in Denbysia. We made it at officer level, we spoke to the county councillors and the elected members, and we just believed that Llan Gollan was a good place to start. We have data for Llan Gollan, we've got walking and cycling data, we've got some consultation data from other engagements that we've undertaken. But there was no sort of comparative exercise made where we weighed up different towns against each other. We sort of made that decision, like I said, at officer level, to proceed with Llan Gollan.
The reason I ask this, obviously, with everything that's gone on in the last couple of years, there's a lot of people in Llan Gollan that are very disillusioned with the town council, and especially the Denbysia County Council. There's a lot of upset people in Llan Gollan, and obviously, you can see that on the media. And for me, we've just had probably 12 months, two years of upheaval, which is only just going to an end now. And all of a sudden, there's another plan with the Four Great Highways, there's another plan with the active cycle routes. How long is it going to go? Are we just going to keep getting chop and change for the next 10 years? And just kind of, we just have to accept it?
That's a reasonable point to raise, I guess. You know, there's been a lot going on in Llan over the last three or four years. And then there's, you know, I'm aware of a lot of that. You know, a couple of things I'd say, we're some way away from going to any construction on site for any of these projects. It's not like we're going to be turning up, starting to dig in the next eight, 12 months or whatever, and upsetting people. And what we intend to do, and I think the really key component to this, is this is going to be the strongest public engagement we've ever done. We're going to tease out all of the negativity, we're going to tease out as much positivity as we can, we're going to have positive conversations, we're going to have difficult conversations with people. And that will be done in close work in partnership with the town council, and really close work in partnership with our elected members. And we will go through it systematically and come out with, hopefully, the right schemes at the end, doing loads of publicity along the way, getting that buy-in, you know, on a different level than we've ever done before, trying to mitigate against some of that potential bad feeling towards the council potentially, because of some of the work that's already taken place.
Okay, thank you. Is this to reduce transport altogether then, throughout Llan Gollan?
Oh, pardon me, sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Is this to reduce transport, i.e. cars, bikes, bicycles, obviously, you want to encourage bikes, but is this to reduce that then? Is it to make it, like, if you like, a no-go zone for cars, or a restricted zone for cars?
No, I don't think we propose to introduce any sort of measures, like no entry zones, anything like that. What we're really trying to do here-
That just destroy it, Llan Gollan?
No, no, no.
The tourists who come into Llan Gollan, we're already struggling with parking for tourists.
Yeah.
And I've noticed a business zone in Llan Gollan, the council, over the last three years, we're devastated.
This is about-
The work that you've been doing have devastated the town.
Yeah. This particular project, this particular project is about local journeys. So active travel relates to journeys of, you know, one, two kilometres from your sort of where you live, to school, to work, to a bus stop. We're not looking to stop people accessing the town. We know that tourism, parking is fundamental to the functionality of the town, to the way the businesses operate. But we also know the town is extremely busy and difficult to navigate for local people at some of the peak seasons in the summer. If we can make it easier for some of those short journeys to be undertaken from home to school, to work, then that's the sort of the way we're looking at this. We're not looking to stop people coming into Llan Gollan, we're not looking to prohibit cars from getting to the town. The focus is on those shorter journeys, making it easier, particularly like Gwen said before, for children to walk and cycle to school, so their mum and dad don't have to drive them in the morning, to make it easier for them. And, you know, that's what Transport Policy really reflects around Wales. It's introducing that opportunity for people to do those shorter journeys in a more sustainable and environmentally friendly way.
Okay.
Hi Ben, if you don't mind, if I could quickly just ask. So you said that through your public engagement, you've already tried to reach out to some of the residents. I noticed that you mentioned three different street names, so Brook Street, Church Street, and Bridge Street. Would it be right in saying that you've contacted the residents of all those three streets, or just a Brook Street at this point in time?
We've contacted the residents of just Brook Street at this point in time. That's the main focus of the discussion and the route we're having. But those are the two streets who form part of that longer route. But our primary focus has just been on Brook Street. We had hoped to letter drop the whole town. We had a plan that we were going to employ a mail shot company, and we were going to write to everybody in Llan Gollan. That was our plan, every single house. But there are no mail shot companies that we can find. So we've had to rely on a volunteer to do the letter dropping for us, to go out and hand-deliver those letters. So it limited us a little bit. If I can find a mail shot company, or we can get more people to support us, as we do more engagement as we go along, we'll write to the residents of the whole route, we'll write to the residents of the whole town if we possibly can. Nobody's excluded. It was more to do with the availability of resources that we had.
I would say, at this stage of the game, that I would feel that that's essential, because, like you're saying, that the main focus is on Brook Street, and that's where a lot of the children, you know, turn up to get to school, with that being the main area of focus. But like you say, if lots of people are commuting down Bridge Street through Church Street, up to Brook Street, you know, the A5, you know, Regent Street, it's not so invasive. But those residential streets that we're going to be ferrying, essentially, the traffic, the new active travel traffic through, I think it's essential to engage those areas as early stages possible, because it's all fine getting the yeses and nays from Brook Street, and then we start to form a plan and take it forward. But then we go, oh, hang on, everybody's got to travel down Regent Street, down Church Street, to get to that. So if we have strong engagement, and then good plans coming together, but then any element of this is seen as like a second thought, you're going to get a lot of negativity again.
I think that's a really good point. And I'll just go back to say, look, we don't exclude anybody. I'd rather talk, or give everybody in Llan the opportunity to talk to us. It's the whole ethos of what we're trying to undertake. We got caught out by this mail shot scenario, where wrongly I presumed we'd be able to find somebody that could do every property in the whole town. And we were caught out at the last minute. And we're sort of, I guess, backpedaling a little bit from there. But we're going to do everything we can. You know, we've sent letters in the children's bags to go home, so it won't just be people on Brook Street, it will be anybody with a child in the Llan Gollan area. So we are trying to capture more people. And if anyone can think of different ways, different support for us to do that, we'll do everything we can. As I say, nobody's excluded.
So the Royal Mail?
Pardon me?
The Royal Mail, postman?
Yeah, the problem with that was that you had to do the whole of the LL, I forget LL, whatever Llan Gollan is. And the letters would have gone to Ruaburn, Ross, Llan Etrigo, you name it, the letters were going everywhere. Instead of just Llan Gollan, they were going to half of Wrexham. And it went too far the other way. So yeah, we thought the Royal Mail.
Well, maybe moving forward, so we, as the town council, can engage with you and ensure that it is a positive experience, and that we're doing right by the people of the town, you know, maybe reach out to us as well, because we've got, we all live somewhere. So if, you know, we can cover five different streets, then why not? We're active members in the community. And if it means going, you know, two of us employing a few streets, then, you know, be sure to reach out to us and see if that's an opportunity moving forward. Because we certainly don't want to get that kind of negative feeling. And I understand it's not from want of trying, from your perspective, but there's trying, and there's making things happen. So I just don't think that we should let opportunities slip to our fingers, when it's potentially going to have a backlash later on, and then hinder the project, or put a bad feeling before it's even got started.
I really appreciate that. And one thing we know is that Llan Gollan, people in Llan Gollan engage with us better than any other town in Denbysia, pretty much. We always get good responses. So we're very hopeful tomorrow. But if tomorrow doesn't go quite as well as we'd hoped, or we haven't got a broad enough spectrum of people attending, then we'll do something again very early in the first quarter of the next financial year. This isn't sort of turn up once, go away, don't hear from us again. We will carry on working, we'll work closely with the town council, we'll organise more events, until we get the type of responses and engagement that we need. So tomorrow's a good starting point. Let's see how it goes. And if it's not quite right, and we don't think we've quite had enough, we'll come up with a new plan and do more.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much indeed, Ben. And Gwen, don't worry about it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you very much.
Wow, good evening.
See you.
Sarah.
So the next presentation we've got is from Boroughs Design Team. Oh, this is the Boroughs Design Team and Four Great Highways. Are you going to, Shaun, are you going to head up, will you?
Yeah, that's fine. But I've got myself here tonight. And just thank you very much for having us tonight. As you're aware, we've been doing some engagement in Llan Gollan. And we just wanted to take the opportunity, having had our first engagement in January, and a walkabout, and various things going on, that we'd like to come back and share with the town council, the concept designs that have been developed. So without more ado, if I hand you on to Dan, to take you through the concept designs, thank you.
Thanks, Shaun. I'll do the usual, let me know if you can all see the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think I've met some of you already, so hello again. We've been to the town a few times, and had some really good sessions, meeting, and getting some initial thoughts. And the, hopefully, some of these plans have already been seen by themselves on the web. So the Four Great Highways is, I would say, a unique opportunity to bring together some of the things that often get left behind in other developments. So it's a fantastic opportunity to look at connectivity, look at the emotional connection, as well as the physical connection between spaces. And we've got, you know, a great guy on the team, in our team, who's responsible for that aspect of signage and wayfinding. So I'd say that probably encapsulates the wider vision and piece. And then within that framework, we have an ability to enhance the public realm, the quality, and doing so through better access, through step-free access, through interpretation of heritage, and through better seating and quality of materials. So rather than run through the conceptual reports, I've just pulled up the web pages that are also based on the boards that were up in the library, as a quick summary. But if you guys need any more detail, I can pull the concept report up, just to talk through the narrative. So in summary, we have four key areas, and area one being the wharf. And this is an artist impression, looking at a future view of the wharf, having arrived from Abbey Road, walking up. And essentially, what we're trying to do here is really work with what we've got, to celebrate some of the good things that happen, including that lovely view up to the wharf, and really focusing our energies and attention on the things that matter the most, improving access and steps access critically up to the wharf, for the day-to-day users, the schoolchildren, and the community at large. Of course, tourism and visitors to the town are super important. But actually, we feel that this project is actually going to make quality of life better for residents, more than anything else in the town. And I think, you know, we're certainly here to support that as a priority. In this option, we are looking to resurface, uplift some of the pavements, including improvements to railings for safety, potential signage improvements for a bit of heritage interpretation, as well as signage and wayfinding, and indeed, the steps access to the right-hand side. Moving down into Low De Mill Park, we've looked at a couple of scenarios, a couple of design options of having a step-free access down into Low De Mill Park. And the reason for that being that currently the only way to get it into the park, if you're a disabled user, or a family with a pushchair, or otherwise, you would have to go down to Low De Mill Car Park. So this is about promoting a step-free access at the other end of Low De Mill Park, at the bridge junction. And really, we've come to two scenarios, two options, that is a ramp and step option at this end of Low De Mill Park, and a ramp and step option further into Low De Mill Park, round about, I don't know if you can see my cursor, round about where there's a viewing deck at the moment, a paved area with a couple of picnic benches. So excuse me if I'm flicking between the two, but I think it's probably the best way of seeing the comparison of option one, a ramp system, a one in 20 gradient with integrated steps from here, an option two, an improved steps access in place of that ramp, and the ramps moved into this location in a more compact way, but a similar sort of length. So in option one, we have quite a straight section that leads you from the top to the bottom. Then here, we have the same sort of profile compacted. And of course, there's pros and cons of both options, not least heritage, visual impact, access points, and so on and so forth. But broadly, I guess what we're saying is both work from a technical point of view. So probably both are quite equally weighted in terms of cost impact and foundations and materiality. So we feel we've come to a good couple of scenarios that we'd certainly welcome your feedback on. And then finally, not least, Lower De Mill Park, as it's becoming known, we have an opportunity to improve access for river users, cookers, and water sports users. We have an opportunity to celebrate some of the good things about the park by encouraging more biodiversity, more planting. We have an ability to work with nature, and have some nature play elements in the park. And we would see this as very much a light touch in places. So opportunities for some challenging steps, and jumping opportunities for children. We've looked at notions of an outdoor gym, and again, this can- We've looked at notions of, of an outdoor gym and, and again, this can be extensive or it can be fairly modest. We've looked at an opportunity for a designated barbecue point, which I would say is something that would encourage, you know, a cohesive place to meet and, and have picnics rather than just a bench, which is, is what's currently there at the moment. And we'd see this park space being very much something that, that isn't offered anywhere else in the town. So not a formalised play area, but a, but a nature play area that's very fitting in with its, with its local, local environment. And then finally, bringing all that together, a, a palette and suite of materials that, that very much responds to heritage, responds to the fantastic fabric and quality of Slangotlin. So heritage materials, including corten steel, local slate from, from the, the local quarry, metalwork painted black, which is very timeless and very heritage responsive. And signage and wayfinding has duality to it. So it's not just a sign to tell you where to go, but it's also a sign that tells you a few things about where you're standing, what view you may have been 100 years ago. So it means less clutter, it means using signposts and poles that already exist and having collars of signage that are attached to those. So we're not introducing additional poles. And having a lighter touch also to signage and wayfinding, so expressions in paving and brickwork and seating elements. So it's not your obvious ways of, of signposting from, from A to B. So if I can leave it there and welcome any comments and we can provide any further detail if, if needed. Thank you.
Very much. And perhaps before we go to questions, in case they're duplicated, is Kristin, I can say anything?
Muted. Hi there. I think Dan's covered everything there, yeah, pretty much spot on, to be fair, yeah.
Fantastic.
No comments from me, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Do we have any questions in the room? Have you incorporated any litter collecting facilities?
And we, we would develop that at the next level of detail, to be honest. The, the concepts we have right now are very much spatial coordination plans. Interestingly, interestingly, some of the feedback we received are actually of, of an over provision of bins at the moment, now you mention it. And it was something that I've not actually heard of before. Usually it's, it's a lack of waste collection facilities, not, not that there's too many in Slangotlin. But of course, that, that, you know, that may not be a point that's shared by everybody in the town, but, but certainly something we would consider at the next stage.
How would it be policed? Basically, your barbecues are obviously going to be there for, for use to the general public. Is there a clean up bathroom? Why they don't clean up them? We have a lot of people coming in in the summer using the rocks as a lot of barbecues and they just leave them everywhere. So how would this actually be policed and valued?
I think that's a challenge, whether you have a designated area or no designated area, because I think that probably happens at the moment anyway. But we'd be speaking with our, our guys from the street scene to, to, you know, so they equally will be consulted on these plans to think how best to manage that.
Yeah, because I understand it does happen now, yes, you can write about that, but it happens on the rocks by the river. This is going to be a woodland.
Yeah.
And a fire, it could be a fire risk.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a really good point. And actually where it came from was, was we'd heard from a number, number of the community that there are uncontrolled fires. There are, you know, several arson events that fire brigade are being called out to just sort of mindless arson and that sort of thing. And it was felt that actually if we had something that was more focused, that it's, you're okay to barbecue here, that may be a way of controlling it rather than hiding it and hoping it won't happen. Actually saying, well, it's okay to do it here because it's safe. There's a sand bucket, there's, there's a, you know, fire protection measures in place and there's nothing flammable within a, you know, a two or three metre radius. I think it would have to be carefully sited in the woodland in a, in a, in a place away from anything that, that may be, you know, able to catch fire. And, and I've seen many of them, you know, in, in various park situations where, you know, they're, they're tough, you know, they allow for easy cleaning. You know, bins are provided, you know, within a, a two or three metre distance. So it, I guess it's a way of tackling it in a more proactive way rather than reactive way. Because we, you know, we're, we're aware of the rocks and the sort of makeshift fires, but in some respects that's unsafe because it's not controlled and it's not in the right place. And, you know, litter collection and as Sean mentions there, littering is, is going to probably happen regardless of whether it's formalised or an informal place to, to, place to do it. So, so I think, yeah, it, it's also something that I guess could be trialled. It could be something that we provide the facility to do it and, and see how it goes.
Would it be, did it be best to the safe disposal of, of the charcoal and the coals?
Sorry.
Would it be bins available for the, the charcoals and the coals?
Hundred percent.
There would need to be, yes.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question please? You're talking about this barbecue facility and my concern now is that you're talking about it like it's going ahead. I suppose it would be a fair amount.
No, not at all. It's a, it's, it's a, it's an idea. It's a, something that, that, that you guys don't have at the moment. So it's something new that could be, you know, seen as a, as a benefit. But it's absolutely nothing that, that's, that's set in stone. I'm, I'm trying to think of a better term, but yeah, it's, it's not, it's, it's not a done deal by any means. If, if the general feeling is it's not wanted, if it's not appropriate, then absolutely, it's just something that, that comes out. We would rather bring things to the table with ideas for you to take them out than be wanting more. I think that, that's important.
I think that's the, it's part of the point of actually coming back and consulting with people is to test the ideas that we've had and see if they're actually what, what, what is wanted or not. And, you know, we, we'll listen to feedback.
And so can I ask, are you going to do that through the public as well as coming to like the town council? Or are you just looking solely to us for feedback and hoping that we engage you further more than this evening or?
No, no, we, we came, we came to Slangotlin, I think it was about this, the eighth of, no, of March as part of the jobs fair and actually had the designs up. We've got the designs in the library and also got hard copy feedback forms there. And we've also got an online engagement again. And we've emailed all the key stakeholders to pass on that and using social media to extend that word. So we've had quite, quite a few responses already, so it's been quite encouraging. We've also done a, a letter drop to the houses in the immediate vicinity of both the wharf and Lower Dymo Park.
Good. Any other, any questions?
Have you, have you put any thoughts into maybe having, you could possibly protect the river ecosystem? Because down there at the moment, it's, it's, it's not massively used. And that's obviously something we want to try and change, so it's, it's an accessible place. Obviously with more people going there, you then get more litter, you then get more issues arising from an area that's been used more heavily now. And with the river right next to it, I think we're going to have a lot of litter and all of a sudden that lets them down the river. So have you maybe considered an option where there is maybe some kind of harvest fence and not, you know, as such, to catch any litter or anything before it enters the river?
Well, I mean, Sean, Sean, jump in if you want. I guess the, the important thing is the, the initial feedback we had from the community and we've, we've had it on, on two, two events. There was another event just before Christmas as well, which, which was a, a very successful school event and also the, the Christmas market. A, a lot of the feeling was it's just an underutilised space. It's a, it's a lovely green space, but nobody goes there, there's no purpose and reason to go there. So, so I, I guess in short, what we are trying to do is encourage footfall. We're, we're trying to encourage people to use the space, which means more people, which of course invariably means potentially more litter, litter. But we would see that in, in many ways, no difference to anyone not using it. It just means it's going to be a, you know, and a, somebody has to take an extra visit to, to the, to the bins in that location. Or indeed they've got a little bit more litter to collect than, you know, than an empty bin. That means they have to empty that bin as part of their, their normal rounds. We've done a lot of engagement with Canal and Rivers Trust in, in the wharf, having those very same discussions. We already liaised heavily with our W and, and the, the authorities regarding the A O N B. So a, a lot of those conversations have already been, you know, prompted. Okay, so who's responsible for maintenance at the moment? Is there enough provision for maintenance as is at the moment? Is there any sort of, you know, the town team as well, for example? You know, you know, is there capacity for an additional maintenance regime, for example? So we've already tested lots of those things and I think broadly the feedback is yes. You know, that they would prefer to service a busier park than an empty park, you know? And I think that's from a, a sort of, you know, just a, a wellbeing point of view. You know, you're, you're going to get happier operatives, you're going to get people who are more keen to see a space used. And, and with that naturally becomes a, a, you know, a regime of, of maintenance. So, so I think it's, it's, it's an emotive subject, if, if I'm honest with you, because yes, we're encouraging people in. But yes, there's going to be naturally a, a more risk of, of litter. But, but I think that's why it's really important that we get everybody's buy-in, that this is a community benefit. You know, it's, it's enhancing the town for not, not least visitors, but, 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 but the community at large. And with that becomes a responsibility. And I think the more we get involved with, with the local school kids, for example, and, 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 you know, from a hearts and minds point of view, we understand Lower Dymo Park is a bit of a drop off point and a, and a collection point as well. So if we're speaking to the children, we're getting them involved in the designs early on. They've got some great ideas already of how some of the, you know, they create a bit of a legacy in these parks as well. And they may, you know, there may be poetry, there may be artwork. The, the feeling is if they're involved in it early enough, that, that there's going to be less likelihood that they'll want to do anything detrimental to the spaces. And I'm not by any means suggesting the younger population are responsible, but it's those sort of initiatives that we've already taken steps to do.
Thank you very much, Dan. We're going to have to stop you there. We're very conscious of the time.
Sorry, I could probably talk all evening, so.
I have noticed that before, you know. But thank you very much indeed for that. And I will just let, for those of you who are not aware, there is an online form you can fill in for feedback and everything. And all the information that we've been presented with is online and in the libraries. So there's no excuse for not putting your own little bit of feedback on it if you wish to. Thank you very much, everybody there. You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Bye bye. Bye.
Wait, so statements from the public, have some guests online? Do you have any statements from the public if you were in the mood? No? Okay, thank you very much. Statements from county councillors? Well, I'm bigger than myself, I've got nothing to say, I haven't had anything. I'm fully, I'd like to say something.
Um, I apologize not to read the last meeting, I wasn't able to, but so I don't have a lot to say, I don't know what you said, but there's a few issues here that, that I need to speak to around. Well, the local development plan, that's not maybe an issue, but you know, we've got quite a long way to go with that yet. It's not due to be adopted until September 2025. By that time, we're kind of halfway in because it's been delayed. Because the second local development plan was to be from 2018 to 2033. So we'll be practically halfway through before it is adopted. So we are still working on the 2018 development plan at the moment. So I'm part of the strategic planning group and we, like earlier, discussed the development plan. And then we make those recommendations, we're wishing to be there in spirit this year. Then, then it's approved and then it goes to consultation with the public. So that's normally on the, I said, 2023. And the consultation period takes about eight weeks in total. Okay. So County Caddy and I are tuned to attend our county councillor member workshop. So we will be going to county hall next week and looking at all the council sites on the map and discussing all the offices. So that's where we are with that. So as I said, you know, there's quite a way to go with that. But I would urge you to go on to the Denbysia County Council website. And if you just put in the search button, local development plans, which I've often, then you'll be able to see what was there. And, and it would be very helpful if I could have your feedback from my using brothers. The next thing is obviously about the 20 mile an hour impactful rollout. Which is due to be implemented on the 17th of September. There are no exceptions for Slangotlin, so it's a strain, you know, anything that's on the street sign that's covered in 13 will default to 20. And during the next three months, the, there will be markings on the road due to be removed. And then they'll be, they'll be replaced, electronic signs will be changing. And there are actually 500 terminal 30 mile an hour signs changing to 20 mile an hour in the county. So that's where we are now.
What they're going to do with that, actually, is they're going to put the 20 mile an hour new signs with 30 mile an hour covers over them on stickers. So that overnight they go around and everything else that happens overnight.
Never get any right now, 20 mile an hour. Slow enough, go through Slangotlin.
Be quicker, you're just not able to travel.
We've got information about the capital roadworks resurfacing programme, okay, in 2023, 24. So Abbey Road is going to have surface dressing. Myse Bacher, Myse Coplin and Garen Bacher will have micro asphalt dressing. Each street in parade streets will have conventional surfacing. I'm not really quite sure what conventional means. So, you know, and that's pretty much it.
I'm not doing anything on the street at all. It's one of the worst streets in town. It's full of hot homes, it's, it's a disgusting. They've just ignored it like yours.
We have to ask county councillors, we call it in on the 360. But which takes me to the C360 system. If any of you need to report anything, report it on the C360 system. Okay, give as much information as you possibly can, photographs, locations, because it, it also helps us.
Yeah.
It's like it's under the thing, it's under the thing back.
Might as well have an actual plan, because I need you to have one.
Do you remember the link to, to all of us? Yeah.
Yeah.
So as we're all aware now, you know, after a couple of delays, phase four of the original 2020 scheme, because that's what we're talking about, you know, at the top of the street even though it's Welsh government.
Welsh government.
We didn't have part of it, it's now being completed. I have concerns and I am going to actually write an email to the officers because I noticed that by the traffic lights, they haven't really managed to get rid of the original markings on the road. And I think that's probably creating a confusing picture. I did ask one of the officers why it hadn't been serviced. And he said that the Welsh government had asked them if they could get rid of, because, you know, we've got that area, like the way they, like, it used to be like a cream yellow in colour.
Yes.
Which is worn over time. To remove that, but they actually put it, the, the, they couldn't remove it. They tried to scrape it off and do various things, but they couldn't remove it. So really that needs to be addressed because it is, it is creating a confusing picture, I think. I'm a bit disappointed about the state of the works outside the armory. I think that you can still see the remnants of double yellow lines. Personally, I think that that could have been attempted to, and I'll be writing that one as well. But, you know, we are where we are, it's been.
Just on that one, there's another one that I, I mentioned, just to keep going on the loop. Outside the garage, used garage, where they say no waiting, no, no stopping. They've put a traffic sensor there for stop traffic. So when no cars be waiting, which is a little bit, it doesn't work, does it?
Counterintuitive, let's say.
Does anybody actually know how the three traffic lights are working then? Because if you've got three people, somebody crosses the road, passes the pelican cross, then the traffic stops. And they cross the road again, the traffic's never going to get moving.
It does, they're intelligent, they're super intelligent apparently. They've got some AI built into them. And they're also linked to the other two pedestrian crossings outside.
Yeah.
And the traffic sensing is linked to the internet and to weather types. So they already can predict what the traffic has been. If people are multiple pressing buttons all the time, then they have to wait. And traffic takes priority. So sometimes they can be waiting up to a minute and a half and give us.
So the people wait, not the cars?
People wait, cars on busy, on busy periods. If it's a quiet period, then, you know, they know there's no, no cars that comes into the mouth person. They can press the button and they'll cross.
I just thought, you know, if you come up to Castle Street now to turn left, go right to Ronald Corwin, and the lights change and the main highway is open, and you get all the cars going left down Castle Street, we're going to get blocked all off again.
That's very true, but apparently the way that it designed, it's to stop all that. And it's supposed to work even better than the mini roundabout, which they didn't have in mind. Right, exactly, but you want to know the answer to your question. One of the things I'm considering, get rid of all the two pedestrian. My dear, they're just totally stupid. Well, they are because one was for the health centre, but the post office.
I honestly believe that's what they were doing because obviously that's like right outside where I work, my mum's property there. And I just thought, surely once that one's in, that one's going. And also the sorting office one, isn't it? Is the second one?
Don't be, no.
No.
It's with post office. But they are linked.
As the matter, they're linked to the cost, taking about a recent percent, it's cheaper to electronic solution. And they're all combined together.
The five crossings are linked.
They're all happening here. If you notice the first thing they did was dig up the road between the two pedestrian crossings.
Yeah, yeah. Eight, five.
But no, they are, the first thing they did was dig up the road between the two pedestrian crossings.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, just one more thing, because I noticed, obviously, I was mindful of your question to Edmil Cox Jones about consulting the residents of Chilroy. So I looked at my emails and, because I knew I had done, I emailed on the twenty fourth of February specifically requesting that the residents of Chilroy, the bridge street, and that's probably invited to engage in events as those streets form part of the proposed active travel master plan route.
Point leaving it till later.
You just don't get response. I just wanted to let you know that it was something that I, that I was quite keen on as well, because they do form part of the route. And that's all you like, that they were consulted along with every good people.
Bikes going the wrong way.
At the start of the town.
I'm only saying that, that's that meaning of the structure thing as well, isn't it? That's a plan to do that, and also that was important. It's a good topic, I think we've got to get back on to the agenda, otherwise we're going to be here till, well, it's, we have to finish. And we won't get all our business conducted.
Just one more thing quickly. I met with a tree officer the other day because I've had information come through to me that the trees are due to be, he told me, wrecked. And there are nesting birds in the trees there. So it's advisable that nowhere takes place until at least all its flesh.
Understand, well, thank you very much. Councillor. Okay. And next item on the agenda is, because I'm in the email now, excuse me.
So apologies, we have apologies for absence.
We haven't had any formal apologies for anybody, Chair. No apologies for absence. Declarations of interest, does anybody have any declarations of interest in tonight's proceedings? Minutes of the last. Any matters arising from the minutes or any comments on minutes of our meeting?
I spoke with Gaoz about that, so I dropped you an email.
Yeah, the position is to translate his email chain. I've been sending minutes and they're not coming back. They would all be corrected. Because I don't usually do the English, I'll check the Welsh. So when when I get those, I'll make sure all the comments, I know councillor Farron was present, right? You know, there's anomalies and things, so it will be resolved, sorry about that.
Very good, so do I have a proposal to say that the tree record is what went on? Get a second then. Thank you, sir. And just my next on the more.
Yeah.
Translate. Financial reports.
I'll be as quick as I can, because I haven't actually come to the right side from the top of my head. The first one, the interpedal run back, the numeration panel for Wales has come out with a report for next year. They do a draft, they do sort of a final in the spring. In essence, they're increasing the allowance from hundred fifty pound to hundred fifty six pound for members. And as I said, I urge you to take it because I think it's quite important.
One more page.
The other, the other element is the addition of the, sorry, I've got this word. Get a deposit, I should say, payment.
Well, expenditure.
Yeah, there's, there's two ways I suggest you do it. If you have a fixed amount for everybody at fifty six pound, or you make advances for people to be reimbursed for what they've actually paid. And we've always done the latter as well. Because, you know, if you are incurring expenses, then you should be reimbursed for the costs. So, and to be honest, I don't know if I've ever had more than fifty six pounds for one member at any one time anyway. So the reality is, it wouldn't break the budget if if we had that situation. So the recommendations are there, that we note the mandatory payments, the force payments have to be paid. You could claim what's all about if you have to for for ready expenses. There's also the mandatory payment in terms of care. So if you're in a position, you need to cover care costs, you can cover those as well. Therefore, the recommendation is that we don't deal with mandatory payments. You know, you can pay the full cost of reimbursement of consumables. As in previous, not to pay the optional payments in fact for the financial loss. See if you have a ten meetings and you find out you have to pocket from your own work, then you can cover that. We have paid that in the past. Travel and the citizens' costs. So if you're travelling or going away, you'd be reimbursed for those. And then we are every time, we confirm that we will publish all these details on the website in September. So that's the recommendation, Chair, and that's all your questions.
Yeah, any questions? We know that then is.
Okay, there's two bits here again. I'll show you, I've got to reach it the ultimate, because I sort of changed the approach in my head and didn't do it properly. Over by councillor, there you can see a nice green and gold chair. We bought these in as a tester. The chairs are steel and heavy and are very difficult to use. They're pillared, shall we say, and I get it, they were second hand, second generation, which I prefer to call them. And are now getting, to show their age even more.
It's all the part.
Yeah, for me. We have volunteers to refurbish them. As the management agreed to go ahead and put in the bunches for the old chairs, which we have. Obviously, you've got events coming up in April, and I'd like to confess that we could get these as soon as possible. So the idea here is, I've got a proffering voice. And what I'd like, the position to pay this immediately on the first of April, rather than wait till the twenty first of April, to get the authorisation. So so that's the reason behind this.
How many chairs have you ordered?
Hundred and sixty, I think it's going to be, go for spares. Hundred and sixty four, hundred and sixty four bucking chairs. So if members are happy with the proposal, this will be pre-approved payment. And we also need to retrospect, improve the purchase of a test chair. Because I forgot to put it on the schedule list when it came in.
Come off your expenses, guys.
So that's the proposal, Chair.
So we've got a proposal for that?
Excellent.
Second then?
As a consequence then, I hadn't taken it off the authorised list. So you've got slightly amended authorised list because there's no longer got the chairs on there.
Yeah.
Salary at the top, we've got an extra payment to the facility this month, following a decision of HR, which goes back a couple of years, so was a special circumstances. So there's an extra payment going out this this month, so that's doubled the salary up quite a bit this month. But it is covered and the HR authorised it. Member payments, as you can see, the difference between obviously a hundred and fifty and last, this year, fifty six next year. Hundred and fifty of those people that were, sorry, councillors that were in post from the election day. And then the others programmed for individual councillors that came on co options. At the moment, I've only had two payment details from councillors. It would be useful if you could let me know how you want. I banked to put it into, I got after tonight, so that we get paid. I notice my name isn't there, but I think I'm the one, one of the people that had sent in my payment details.
You're not on there?
No.
Means you don't get paid?
Obviously, we can think that. Be like that. I'm sorry, when you are live, it's very good stuff, yeah.
I've probably messed up since then, just to. All councillors that are in post will get paid. And obviously, your salary will be one fifty and this councillor gets into that.
No.
No, I'm not, it's not so big.
Sorry, so you would be a hundred and fifty as well because you were elected. So if you want to win those amendments, I'm going to make sure that that is.
There are eight names on that.
Rush.
She has provided information and she's away and so I can't pay her. Okay. Um, yeah, and yeah. So subject to that amendment, there'll be include all the nurses on the office.
That's it, I'll propose that.
I will re-present that for clarity, thanks, but the payments will remain. Sorry about that.
Okay, so I'll propose that for a second then?
Curtis has a question. What happens if now if some of the councillors are less go? Is that payment still to be made?
Until. Payment is paid on the basis of when you start for a twelve month period. Right, so those that are still in post now would be paid to a twelve month period. Because normally paid in front, but we thought it's a long story. There used to be taxable and all that on top. But it's because of a late start, you get less for the year. But then you get the allowance for the year. If you leave, because we used to pay in front, so if you left, it could have been sort of, could you give it back please? Yeah, so this way. And of course, this is the last one.
Yeah.
Excellent, so I proposed it, since then then?
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. I'm reconciliating, I did manage to send things, but hopefully he's happy to present it.
Yes, yeah.
So accept that as that. Financial statements in the company, obviously, they're not going out this month. So again, most of the budget lines will be expended or unexpended. Those that are over in terms of maintenance, where we had the fortunate position of having that project fund, which we've not used because, if you remember, we applied to see if we could get some brand funding for the town hall. Safety keeps first, as it were, that's there, Amazon buffer. Obviously, that will fall into reserves for next year. So you have a bit of a more clear report next month, exactly how we finished up. There's nothing we need to report unless any members have any specific questions on the budget as a statement.
Propose are those correct? Or is that just a note from the financial statements?
Yeah, it is.
Town plan reports.
I'll be as quick as I can, because I don't think there's as much time, particularly on the governance one. The first is, that's chair, doesn't tie in, I think we may need a bit more for your report. So could we do that on the end? And I'll be through the others. So I've got some parts of projects, sorry, a king's coronation. There's a lot going around at the moment from councils, particularly in England, where the parishes each other a bit more. The relationship is different to what in Wales with the, you know, the monarch, the head of the establishment church. But we haven't really considered whether we want to do anything at this, at Slendrath. There are proposals, various things, you know, in the report, you can see the breakdown of the days, whether we want to put on something press. Picknick will suggest people turn up for picnic or even going to, you can get for sixty two pence a mug. So we could have coronation mug without press on the back. And the thing is, we have just short three hundred and sixty pupils at the two primary schools. And then we could give a mug to them, sort of traditionally, but we've not really given it any thought. As head of, for about the eight hundred and nine hundred pounds cost for the mugs. Rest, obviously, with, depending what, what, what get it brought. The reason I'm hesitant on my picknick idea is when, you know, we have Christmas festival and everybody turns up in a square. We did the, what was it, last year, the jubilee, everybody turned up on the square. So we just turned to the same thing. So I'm just wondering perhaps the traditional little mug was standing to have one side and our logo on the other. And then just arranged that the man from school, so that's. And we may be able to work with others on belt purchasing earlier. If you look at it. I've got some ideas and then I'll see what you think really, and then we can take it forward.
As far as the parties go, I know that there are a couple, three parties that are already organised. So we asked to attend a couple. So I don't think we need to be bothered with that sort of thing. I love the idea of the most good junior schools. That's a great idea. It's keep safe for that, isn't it? Maybe I get another one and went against the biggest school.
I mean, the reason I'm respectful, I've not been at a big school, but of course, they're not, we're fellow residents in there.
And they've definitely encompassed it.
Whereas the two primary schools are a whole other thing, a lot of people. So if you want, I'll proceed with that and we'll find them somewhere.
Yes.
We'll keep it as low cost as we can, but with quality in mind as well.
Perfect.
Okay, that's brilliant, Chair. If the finance governance toolkit, you know, I don't think we need to actually scroll through them because I've looked at it to depth. Last time, the only one thing that popped out last, last review, two themes, which was our desire to either be appointed, or even look for youth councils, or however you want. I must say, the ones on the finance and governance, if any members have any specific questions, we are pretty well heard. We've obviously got the smoke system. We comply with all the requirements within that. We bring reconciliations every month, which is above and beyond the minimum. You get financial statements regularly. So I'm fairly confident that all the areas that we've got, we're pretty well covered in terms of finance. And then the last section is the evaluation. And I think, again, we've always done an annual report, which is a statutory requirement, our duty under the new act. But we'd always done well. And we always used to have, which you didn't have to have in Wales, the parish meetings, like in England, we started a meeting in March, obviously with Covid, that's given a bit. But I was just wondering, perhaps we did, I moved across to May. So when we published our next annual report, we could present the report to the community and try and get some feedback from that. We've also got the business plan, which we've adopted, which needs to be reviewed. And we said we review that alongside everything else. So I think on the last figure of the health. So I think on the latter figure of the health check, you know, I think we do particularly well. And I would say that we do particularly well on all the health check, which shows that as a council, we've adopted policies.
I think you're doing your job very well, I think that's what it should be.
Well, yeah, but it's down to members to support it, isn't it?
Of course.
Agree to get those things in place. So I think we can stand up, we've done the check, and then we can use it to conform the annual, uh new annual plan. We'll present it the annual each in May, that's okay, chair. So that's a good idea.
Just, is there anything we need to do as individual councillors? Um because I'm a bit confused, when I started reading it through, I thought, Christ, there's a lot of work for me to do. I'm looking through, but is this just a general overview of the whole council where we?
The the purpose was, it's, there was a review and. There's quite substantial review of the sector done by the Welsh Government prior to Covid. Over it into being, not mistaken. Uh and um, sorry, if we'll write back, it was the Aberystwyth report way back. They reviewed us, they come up with them, some recommendations to come forward. They're still, so took juries out on some, like, like dual hatched members, is it sensible to have dual hatched members on town county councils? But they're still waiting for that. So this this health check came out as a way of saying, right, these are the. Bearing in mind, there was something like a hundred and twenty councils that didn't need to be enrolled.
Hmm.
Uh there were fundamental problems in some areas and not with others. So it's it's really a catchall document, you could just run through to check, have to check really, basically.
Okay.
And I think we've gone through the process, so we've certainly said that we're healthy and that we have the right processes in place. So that's where it came from. And to be honest, if you have roles in place, I'm not sure you're a very good council anyway. And I, you know, you shouldn't really operate, I think. So, I mean, you know, we've done the process, we can prove that we've gone through it and that, you know, where the deficiencies. I mean, HR already proved the policies of the deficient are. So, you know, we've covered those, we've got things to cover in the H I. We have the meeting, uh like constitution, but I'm looking at various ones that have been suggested by One Voice Wales, so they'll come on stream.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then quickly, gentlemen, you want to shout out if I know them all. One Voice Wales has asked us to look at their annual, but they'd like to go through it in paper before you fill it in online. So I'll do it very quickly, um should training, remember an office training be managed?
Uh no. Because I've turned it, I'm definitely sure I'm too young to do that.
Oh, okay.
Got cancelled.
Yeah, that's all issues. Uh do we have a crew budget? Would you? Okay. Do the transfers attend one voice those courses? We have in the past, I've still waiting, I know you will reply to actually work out what you want to go on.
Yes.
And so, but I think, as I said, in the next session, all the chairs will have chair training and whoever sits on human resources will go on the employment. If councillors. They're very worthwhile.
Yeah, but. Because I mean, I did a course, but I've done, it was like an online video and I didn't know whether that tied in with this.
Yeah.
Whether it was a separate course, I'm looking through.
All obviously was fitted to training class, but this is one voice. I should cleanse, I haven't trained in one voice yet, but they are good. Well, you've said you're satisfied with what you've been on.
Yeah, yeah, I've been very soon.
Yeah, sorry. Um it's a wonderful uh quality of the trainers used, you know, it's supposed to be as me, so you can read it. Okay.
Who else has been on the course then?
I think I have. I think that was the online.
Yeah, it was like just a gentleman talking, wasn't it, maybe?
Well, it was about ethics and.
Yes.
That was a call.
That was the same one, yeah.
That that was Dembeshia, but it'll kind of.
Oh, it was.
Happy with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh as a chair clerk, how likely do I answer? You're very likely and I'm very likely.
Yes.
Um what do you think the main values of councillors attending training courses? Cost, we've got a budget. Time, commitment. Timing of courses. Time, time courses. Lack of support. Which is time. What days of the week do you prefer? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday? On no preference. Evening, evenings, not weekends. No, we have those on Mondays and Fridays, not weekends. Uh evening, you said. How far would you travel? It's all online now. And if sort of you had to travel, what's the minimum?
You've got four, yes, I was that.
Five to ten maximum.
Would you go to Rizin to the town?
Okay, so five to ten, that's fine. Scale of one to four. How relevant is it the training is?
That's what the course is.
Can you tell how irrelevant?
What do you consider is about to pay the training? Up to thirty? Up to fifty, up to seventy?
Plus, it comes that anyway, doesn't it?
I'd say up to, well, I think up to thirty, I think.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're going to put the price there. Uh that's what it is at the moment, it's thirty, thirty five. Uh yes, you have, yes, they do. Um I'm scared for, I'm afraid for your members of your council to have webinars to be. There's a webinar there.
A webinar is a fine, very useful lesson.
I wouldn't say I learned an awful lot, I'm ambitious, but I'm honest.
Okay. Okay. Presenting, that's just the last. Face to face. Um. Would you counsel for face to face training sessions, either in or webinars? Online. I'll work on that one then. Uh language demand, um. Welsh, English, both Welsh and English.
It would be bilingual, it would be.
It should be, it should be spoken training for councillors. I think it's a yes. It's a yes, yeah, I'm going to refuse that to you.
We can send Shay on there, how to use teams.
I must say, I'm very proud of the planning lesson played in this of that room.
That's right.
If it's your name as councillor.
Yeah, you're not, you're not seeing anywhere below here, like. I'm behind the camera, I've piled it, yeah, it's it's not, it's not the most tidy. I've got it, but.
The mechanic is covered.
Literally what they like, so are they shocking?
Yeah, we took the top reduction, we do that as well, so. Uh diversity and democracy, we're in the institute of training, no, I don't like to do an exist. Have you used a financial health governance assessment toolkit?
Yes.
Well, we're doing it, aren't we? Yes. Um. How interested is in councillors' financial governance arrangements? What was that, sorry? How much would you buy it for coming from your owners?
Oh, yes.
Brilliant.
It's difficult, you don't actually, we can squeeze through it, absolutely. The influence.
That's the clerks, that's your clerk, the train. She's new. Long question, yeah. Um yes, clerk. Yes, it's. I think we've talked about it. Please imagine how you will also thirty per year for the. I'll spare you that. Through the proof training plan, yes, we are. If you're happy on what you've said, I'll answer it online, I'm, we've assisted. Hopefully that will speed us up a bit, we really want to.
Perfect, thank you, and I'll try not to read it word for word, hopefully you've managed to have a quick read through. So um basically, in a nutshell, when I became a member and we got asked if we wanted to work on different projects that were, or organisations that were going on locally. Um I put myself forward to to work on the park project with Jess Evans, who, you know, it's relevant to me because I've got children of an age who use the local parks. Um I know Jess well, um and obviously it seems like a good positive thing. It felt um both under the community and um for visitors as well. So I feel quite strongly that we don't just keep pursuing things that are set for the tourism, but also to make sure that it's a really good environment for our young people and ourselves and families, et cetera, to live in the community as well. So I was quite keen to work on this project. So so far, um we've got Jess, who's the chair of the Flangothlins Park Project. And um we've also got Paul Evans, incidentally, they are husband and wife, so. But Paul is employed by Dembeshia County Council through A O M B and runs the park site. Um and as I'm sure you're aware and seen, that there's been significant developments going on down at the Riverside Park recently. Um Jess has worked at this relentlessly um as a volunteer to try and get, um you know, some really quite big developments down. You know, it's not just tidying the place up, it's really looking overall um at how the space has been used, aesthetics, functionality, environmental impact, all those elements. Um chased the first stage of funding and, you know, she's following the project through very well and making sure it's happening on the ground as well. So basically, um Karen and I met Jess recently and there were a couple of issues, a couple to chase back up to Dembeshia to Streep Scene and where Dembeshia County Council are already responsible for the play equipment and things like that and to ensure that that's kept into, you know, in good shape alongside these developments. Um but what the difficulty basically that they're having as a volunteer organisation is that they're not, they feel like they haven't got like the status behind them to be able to pursue chasing additional funding to bring the future phases forward. So at this current time, they've got the new mini golf all bought and paid for. They've got the new play equipment, which is the the next age bracket up. So the original existing one is for the younger age, so under eight years, and they wanted to really open it up into a a new age bracket as well, so that's all bought and paid for and being implemented. Some of the flow of the park, disused space and things like that, some new plantings taking place. I'm a tad unclear, but councillor Kenny might be able to clear it up for me, but there's been some funding towards the bandstand and that's going forward. So there's a regeneration um of the bandstand area, which is mainly disused, so it can be used by the likes of the fringe with some electricity, correct me if I'm wrong at any stage.
We have the grant for electricity.
Electricity and some seating, so then that that regenerates what's there existing um to to be used for music and events and things like that, and it's quite nice positioned with um the the tarmac area with the dragon and things. And I've noticed in years gone by, you know, some ice dead for people have gone up and made performances there and things like that. So basically, Jess has reached out and said, as a volunteer group, they're finding it extremely difficult to be able to a, a the liaising issue between Dembeshia, Streep Scene, A O M B, and there's a lot of factors at play. And secondly, to then go into the future phases of the project to do with funding. So what she's asking is that if we, instead of just like I going and talking and assisting and sending a couple of emails, if we could officially merge in a in a group where there's the Flangothlins Park Project, there's Flangothlins Town Council, there's a Dembeshia County Council member amongst Flangothlins Tidy Towns team because they do some work in the park at different times and have proper sit down meetings where we can, you know, go through points and we can use, you know, the services of Gareth to go away and find funding pots, put in applications on on their behalf. Um Jess, one of the other main points is that the work, the groundwork that they've laid down now, they've gone away, they've had all the feasibility studies done, which they did do extensively because, and that's how I came to know about the project because it must have been four or five years ago that Jess was reaching out in, through social media and especially to parents who would use the parks and doing surveys. So I I know, like, from personal experience, how long she, the groundwork she's been putting down for this. And they've had the feasibility studies done, they've had all the drawings made, um they've had all the costings done.
Yes.
Um, you know, so the costings are there for utilities, play area, mini golf, green infrastructure, bandstand, water play, ramp steps, active travel, um a hover deck, which is to do with the existing building that's there, like the kiosk, to regenerate that, the skate park um and team play as well. So at the moment, as it stands, they've had two hundred and sixty thousand pounds worth of funding and that has been spent on the the elements that I mentioned before. And then there's obviously the future elements that they would like to pursue. But I think at this stage, they feel if they don't have the support of the town council, that they're just going to keep like coming up against brick walls to be able to like continue with the ideas um and implement. So what is proposed is now that it becomes a phased project with phase one already having been done and in place now. And then we phase it into at least four phases. And then we can go in and address some of the, you know, the the next issues that they'd like to to look at down at the Riverside Park. And then, like I say, we can chase appropriate funding in terms of, I think, phase two, they would like to look at accessibility and and with things like the water play, which is four hundred thousand pounds coming in at the tail end. You know, if if there's still traction and and want and will to to pursue things like that. So basically, what I'm asking is that would we consider as a town council formally setting up um a group to work alongside and with Dembeshia County Council and the Parks Project to try and assist them basically in continuing this um project to move forward.
Thank you very much, brilliant. Um has anybody got any questions? Great, I propose at least that's a better test to fit through, support this project.
How, what's the, um it's it's a bit off off subject, but what's the timeframe of doing this?
To my knowledge, Jess hasn't outlined a complete timeframe. Karen, have you? Any information whether she's got?
It depends on the grants, actually. It depends on the grants, so.
I think Jess originally chased the full lot funding. It's a lot of money and I I recall Simon Baines came down and had a meeting with Jess and I think at the time she was looking. So whereas we were part of that, not the levelling up fund, but the. but the Shared Prosperity Fund, and it went between Corwin, Langgottlands and Rontsuckley, and our element has gone to Plasnewy, Horseshoe Falls. Do, does that make sense, what I'm talking about? She asked at that time whether this could be part of that fund, but she wasn't successful. So then she independently pursued for different funding. So through something called Brilliant Basics secured, if I'm not mistaken, about £200,000 worth of the funding and then, or £260,000. So that then became phased then, because I think, like, we've got, you know, 1.4 million there, where originally she chased the whole lot and wasn't successful. So has requested, you know, for the developments to still go through but phased. And I think one of the big ones is the water play, but she is very realistic. She's like, this may never happen, that might be a pipe dream, if you mind the pun. But she said, when we had the plans and we had the people in place to get everything drawn up and, you know, plans made, she said, we all just went for the whole hog. And then we're looking at it phased and bringing in those elements, obviously, that are in a timely matter that are most pressing. So, like, with the play equipment not being suitable for all ages of children, excuse me. And then now, secondly, and I think the mini golf went ahead because that's important as well, because that's a pay-to-play element, which then helps funding push forward and the use of the park as well furthermore.
Can I just say something? The difficulty with these funding streams, as we all know, is there's always a short timeline. So the good thing about this is that there's already a plan, isn't there? There's already the phases. So it's important that you do have an overarching plan, the feasibility studies have been done, everything's there ready, so that you can fire it in straight away as soon as these funding streams become available. You know, I mean, I know that with regards to the Shared Prosperity Fund, that Derbyshire recently agreed to permission, having included in the DBSD to facilitate this with lower value schemes, but there's not all schemes in the media. So there's a pot of money on one side, really, for lower value schemes. But, you know, I'm mindful of how much work and effort was put into the Cambridge project, the T W Square project, so, you know, which Gareth, I have to say, who hasn't managed it without Gareth. So there's nothing that Gareth doesn't know about funding sources and what have you. So, you know, at least it's positive, but so much work and effort has gone into it so far. It's a shame to stop here. I think it's only right and fair that we support these people that have started this whole, you know, thing off and, you know, it's fit for the band and the town and everybody, isn't it? So, yeah, we're around to see my thoughts.
Oh, it's brilliant, because if, you know, if it's a timeframe of 12 months or two years, people might be more inclined to do it, but if it's something that's been over 10 years, people go, really, we're going to be tied into that for 10 years? It's just a personal question, isn't it, really?
What it will be, for instance, if you break down here, the bandstand at the moment's got the chance to grant security, it's got the overflow plan, it's not escalating in the same order as this. But if there's a fund coming up, like, December's, oh, we've got so much money to spend by March, these projects are already planned, so as soon as December comes up, there's money, go in for it. And then it's got to be sorted out in March then, and we're ready to run it, basically.
And then there's more of a timeframe on when you spend that money. Like, Paul just pointed out, like, this is all the £260,000 which has been funded now, that's all going to be wrapped up by the end of the month, that's going closed by this financial year. So Jess and Paul have to push this project forward on the ground to ensure that all that's implemented and they, you know, crossed all the Ts, dotted all the Is, had all the plans, had all the safety, had everything else.
One that isn't completely in time.
Are you listening? I mean, it's just about the project.
Management, isn't it?
But there is a, well, we've seen one tonight, Reform Reinforcement System, that can be a bit of a buffer zone. It shouldn't be used, but it can be used.
And to be honest with you, they never expressed to me that they were really struggling with the project management. It's the communications and it's the finding the funding.
The infrastructure, the way that the council's set up with all the funding streams as well.
And like Jess said, putting forward applications coming from a town council and our support, you know, not only having Gareth's knowledge and time to go and look at the funding streams and put in those applications, that we hold a bit more clout essentially. So if we go and ask the lottery for the rest of the money, they might just feel like, there you go. We like that project, all the groundwork's been done, they've made significant progress through a voluntary organisation, let's finish it off. But she's saying that she's finding it hard to keep that traction.
I suppose people are just looking at it and just going, she's just a general member of the public asking for £2 million.
So basically, by saying that's the finish group, we facilitate all the works that are going on in that park. I think it's great. So I've got again, I'm going to the polls, et cetera. Thank you. Finish group, anybody who'd like to second that? Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, very good. Also, obviously, we have councillors down there.
I'll happily put myself forward.
We have another councillor as well. I'm willing to go to one board if, unless anybody else wants it.
I mean, we, like, are nominated towards the project already, aren't we? And a used store's going on, so it would make good sense, so, thank you.
Brilliant. Hopefully, port you up a bit to get to the. Okay, planning, there's only two, this is a debris on my notes, here we go. The Pines Abbey Road, so this is only a variation. And he's put in the variants. In 2018, the project was completed, where the garage was part of the deeds and he turned it into a holiday left, they're getting divorced and he wants that, it's his business. So he wants to separate it from the side of the deeds house. But he's got, he's planning for that, so I can't see any objection to that. There's been no objection, by the way, from CDP, from CPAT. Duke Henry Royal Water Hall, they. So.
No comment?
And the other one is the old chapel on Abbey Road by the railway station. They've put in conversion from a shop to a residential, what it's five bedroomed, donning.
Are we talking about Rusty Gold?
Used to be Chapel.
Chapel, yeah, okay.
So basically, on the front of it, really, it is on the front of it because the facade stays the same, they're changing the door, the windows are staying the same. Side windows, they're keeping the same shape, but they just want to put some sash windows in there so they're easier to open. So from the outside, it will not really work any different from what it is now. The AOMB have picked up on the LDP policy, PSC 10, which means they haven't proven it's commercially viable, it's a commercially viable business, or it isn't commercially viable. And it hasn't been put on the market in 12 months. So basically, what it's saying is still a shop until they say, we can't be getting money for it. And they try and sell it as a business for 12 months. So that's that, after David's objection too. CDP have an objection, CPAT have requested an archaeological survey and just to be carried out for record, so that they know exactly what the chores look like in olden times, which probably, for what it's worth these days, I don't know what's in there. As a resident, just made his concerns noted for, it's a five-bedroom house, basically, and this isn't parking for a five-bedroom house, so sorry, yeah. And Duke Henry Royal Water, they're okay, but they recommend continuing the same connection to the soup system without disrupting it in this there. So basically, do we want to express concerns or anything on that one? There is the LDP policy that we could bring up on, on the parking. And from that, it isn't really changing, it isn't affecting anybody directly. Any grounds of objections there?
I think we had a previous application for the antique shop on Byd, and they were after turning part of it to a coffee shop. And we obviously put our concerns forward for that. Does it look?
This is the other way, isn't it?
Yeah. So do we apply the same aspect for that?
I suppose then what you have to furthermore think, because it is the town's infrastructure for more residents, is the implication of that. So, like, on par with what you were just saying, like, it's the town, does the town need another coffee shop? Well, so a five-bedroom house, potentially, hopefully, maybe a family, that it's going to be school places, doctors' places, parking.
Looking at the designs, it is making us a family residence, looking at the designs.
It's a family home. So it's just whether there's, you know, viable infrastructure for that. But we're not SGSH trying to put up 100 houses, are we? So, you know.
But there are certain things we can oppose on. What is obviously, it is not how it affects.
No, no.
The residential status, unfortunately.
I mean, the one I would draw to your attention is RD1. And a good stance of time, as you may have referred to. One is the Alveeta Junior. Does not have an exact effect on the highway network as a result. Congestion, danger, nuisance arising from traffic generated. And of course, traffic management, et cetera.
It's the opposite to that, isn't it? Because instead of people using it as a pull-in, pull-out for good shopping, they're not.
You know, with the bays in front, directly in front of the property, are they theirs?
No.
No, they're highways, but actually, it's got a curtilage?
It does, yeah.
Does, so there's a potential. Yeah, there's the potential maybe for parking of a couple of cars there, so.
I mean, that's the only one I said, but that traffic is probably an objection.
So what do you have commissioned, you've got that, the old vibe for 12 months, anyway? Well, that's part of the LDP, but that's up to the council really to allow that or not. The Derbyshire, when I say the council.
Is that listed bill?
But you can make the same comment as Saviel was, actually.
It was a residence.
Also, you know, that was AOMB, you know, we could say that we're concerned that it doesn't seem to have complied with that policy in the first instance and subject to that.
My personal experience, when I've been in there, it's absolutely full of big ones.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of things.
So essentially, that protects, because it was the opposite. Then obviously, we're looking at losing housing for low.
I think we're reading too deeply into this one. I think we should, my personal recommendation would be to leave it out to the council.
Yeah.
PS10s there.
I'd agree with that, but, yeah.
So you don't want to just reiterate PS10? We can reiterate PS10, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, we could be here till late in our business. Who's selling it? Okay, with certificates of decision and the final challenge speech has been approved. Are we in any correspondence with?
No.
No correspondence. In which case then, we've concluded our meeting. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Keep that roof tidy, Shane.
I will, don't you worry. See you, Austin, Tisha.
Okay, yeah. Sign, yeah. I've got a very quiet week this week.
License in council due to lack of business consumption.
Because we all have contact.
Yeah, okay. Any others?
Only Corey.
And none else has applied, so we thought it then.
Only you and Corey, nothing for Conway.
No, what I'm saying is, there's no others come in from the unit, we've got that here for them.
Oh yeah, there's only you, yeah. Three, essentially.
No boxes, no piles, nothing at all on Valley Road.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And apparently they came over the other day and fixed the bottle.
Did you put a C360 in? Because I'm too busy, but.
Less people turn up.
When you're approached, if you can't just file the C360, it really helps a lot.
Honestly, I didn't know about that form.